... and the compass, the work co-op that we've just started and our personal plans of study. We feel like we're being successful in this area because we've done the career development activities. They've been completed at all grade levels and we're on target on the M-CIP five, career and college readiness standard on APR. And then our third goal is personal and social development. This was addressed through guidance activities such as guidance classroom lessons and programs, as well as counseling, consultation, and referrals. And we feel like we've been successful in this area based on our guidance program evaluation results, which indicated that eighty-six percent of those surveyed, and that included students, teachers, and parents, rated the guidance program as excellent or good, and we feel like that's indicating that we're fulfilling the needs of students. So we would like to continue with the same three goals. We feel that they're meeting the needs of our students, so we would like to continue with working on academic development, career development, and personal and social development.
Any questions for Mr. Vaughn?
How's the additional college, I guess we could call it, that's Mizzou sponsored?
Yes.
How is that going this year?
It's going great.
That's what I hear.
Much better.
Okay.
What's her name?
Taylor Mary.
Yes.
Is it Taylor, what?
Taylor Mary, whatever.
Yep.
Is it better because of her?
Yes.
And will she be returning next year?
Yes.
Okay. And then do we have to reapply for that program?
I'm assuming if the grant money is there again, it will automatically be renewed for that if we want to stay in the program, which based on this year's results, we definitely do.
Okay.
She's met with all the seniors.
She will be here next year?
Yes.
Because I thought, because we had one last year, that she would fulfill the two-year commitment with just one year.
Well, but she was at first year, she had just been trained, so she just started as her first year, and so she'll just kind of start it over with a two-year.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. So we're very, very happy.
I've heard really good things this year.
Yeah.
She's a bundle of energy now.
That's what I hear with it.
I've been impressed with the number of activities she's planned for the children, not children, but students at the high school.
Yeah, she's doing really good.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have the school safety report. Scott Beadell is going to share that information.
We had four goals established in 2014 for our school year last year. The first of which were to continue to maintain emergency preparedness in the district. Over the summer, I conducted another effort, a little bit of our safety supplies. Went through every personal disaster safety kit that was out there in the district, make sure all the things that were in there were supposed to be in there, and put together a list of things, of supplies, to replenish those things in the damage caused. We also went through part of our emergency operations plan this past summer. There were some concerns about language and being able to communicate effectively with drill, especially a lockdown in the crew drill. So a team of administrators and Sykes, the Department of Public Safety officials got together over the summer. We looked at that plan, we looked at the work teams and the candidates that were working that with us that were better communicated. We've also done a lot of work with the mass casualty scenarios. I was able to purchase out of the budget a mass casualty incident tent for Nica High School. Cost purposes for that, she could use it as a cooling center, football game, or things like that. I do know that there are some nursing students that want to conduct mock drill to high schools. We're trying to put that together for them, so that tick could be used by them in practice. So a lot of things can be done as far as supplies. Second goal was to monitor the school's safety professional development needs. There were some recent changes in child abuse and neglect reporting. So Trish Cooper came through the district and she conducted those updates. Nica did updates on education training, A D training, outreach awareness, and things like that. So those were met. There's always something changing as far as the safety statute or the law has come out. Goal three was to maintain the district's ability to provide violence prevention programs. I think the prevention programs we selected here at the district are very effective. We continue using what brings there, the DARE program, Netsmart, programs like that, have proven to be effective for the students. Goal four were to assure the district's security of the facilities. My grandest crew has worked relentlessly to make sure that we have one key to fit all locks at each building, so the hash queue program is coming along. Me and these folks, contractors, are working, as we speak, on accident control for the different buildings in the district. Cars, proximity cars, white cars, electronic buzzer access. He is expanding the security camera coverage, also trying to update old cameras. I want to see if those can be moved up to some clearer cameras that are IP-based. With the IP-based cameras, it's actually possible for DPS to tap into that camera and get eyes on it as soon as it's happening. So you've got real-world live information coming in that way. Another perk for us on the issue of security facilities. Goal number four, which we'll carry into next school year, is the panic button system. What we're going to be able to purchase here in the near future due to a grant that Sykes, who was awarded from the state. The state set aside $40,000 for school safety this year, which is something that they don't usually do. They had that money, two hundred and several districts applied for it, forty-nine were awarded, only two of them would have decided to abandon that experience. They've added their radio communications ability, and we're getting a panic button system that will send an instant alert to law enforcement if there's something going on in the building that's already getting out of control. We hope to carry these four goals over, save the four goals over next year. People are pretty comprehensive as far as covering a lot of the bases.
Scott, have you thought about expanding the intruder drills, at least at the upper grade levels, maybe to include a drill with students involved too?
Yes, ma'am. A lot of discussions have been carried on about that. We have just recently secured two instructors for the ALICE program. ALICE is acronym, A-L-I-C-E, is acronym for one of the many multitude programs that are out there for intruder training. And I'm one of the instructors for the district, and Sergeant Casey Riddle is an instructor for Sykes Public Safety. We also have an instructor with highway patrol here in our region, and two instructors in the American region that can conduct training like that. So we just kind of broke waters, kind of to see how ALICE would work with our current system. We did that this school year. So probably next year, we'll start getting more involved with secondary students, getting them into the drills, bringing outside trainers. I also have a trainer at South Dakota State that can kind of guide him as an actual local trainer. So people like that. The resources we have in the area to do those kinds of drills, it should matter just getting them scattered.
Now that I've been on the criminal justice committee and a lot of the officers who were on that with me, that's a theme of theirs, that they would like to see that happen and would help participate in any way that we need. I think that's great.
The Crisis Go app, do we have that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that district-wide, or is that?
It has just been fully implemented for all of our teachers, secretaries. They'll have the bus drivers, you know, eventually will be able to get home once they've had training, will be able to get onto it. All district employees have access to the app now. Just did that over Christmas.
So what, can you tell me a little bit about kind of what it is?
The Crisis Program is an app that you can carry either on an iPad or a smartphone. And since it's an app, it's independent, to a point, it's independent of any network connection. All the other programs that are out there, you have to have an internet source, an internet connection to get into your plans online and see what your rosters are to get into, you know, SIS. But with the app, it's all in your pocket. So once you've downloaded it, like I carry all the rosters of every building in the district on my phone. All the central office administrators do, all the commanding officers of Sykes Public Safety, they all have it. So if one of the, you know, schools had an incident and the administration was overtaxed or not even present because of meetings or whatever, somebody would be able to show up on scene, have student rosters, even have the information of who can check them out. You just pull out a student's name on your phone and it pops up who's legally authorized to check that student out. We've never had that kind of information at hand before, not without digging through a whole bunch of files and, you know, emergency cars and things like that. There are maps from here, evacuation maps. There is a two-way notification system built into the app. That would be dependent of internet connection, wireless connection. Whereas, just using with Blockwell here as an example, she could send out an alert to her staff, tailor it only to one wing. If she wanted to, she could alert just one wing, or she could alert the whole district that something's going on in her building. She's got the capability in the app. And vice versa. One of her teachers could alert her, something's going on. So if there's a large fight going on out in the parking lot, making an alert is so good and it's why we have that work. And in that work group, and you know how you tailor it, all the central office administrators are tied into it automatically. So you don't have to make repetitive phone calls, so it saves time. And DPS, the school resource officers, are automatically tied into it too. So it's a really good two-way, it's the best one I've found out there than maybe others. But as far as being independent of any kind of internet connection, it's crisis management.
Instead of having your flip chart, like you used to have, you know, flip charts was just kind of a thick binder. We have everything right here, right here on an app. You can put on your iPads, you can put on your phone. And we found, I had personally found it works better on my iPad because it will drain your battery down. So if you have it on your phone, it's going to drain down quite a bit. But I mean, for example, today, I believe you guys had an alarm, did you not? I believe you were running a drill over there. Soon, I believe it was today, did you not, Southeast? Maybe that was yesterday or the day before.
Gee and I had a quick one.
There was a drill that went out today and we were immediately alerted here at this office that they were performing a drill, so, which is kind of a nice feature as well. And I like the idea of having the rosters right here at your fingertips instead of carrying out your grade book. You've got everything right here, and it's worked out well so far.
Heather and Garrett can speak to that too, if I can call them, I put them on the line live. They were instrumental in training with the staff at their building in the Crisis Go app, and getting that implemented. It's really handy as far as if you're out there, I got my students, now what's next? I got my kids accountable for them, now what do I do? Oh, I remember, I'm one of the first aid team, what do I do as a first aid team member? I can bring up my checklist on this phone, and it's all independent. Once you download it onto your phone or your iPad, it's there, you're not going to lose it. So I can bring up my checklist and tell them step by step as a first aid team member what I'm supposed to do. Then as an accountability measure, that team leader can submit that checklist. You've got records. So, you know, if there were any kind of liability issues later, did you really account for my child? Did you take into account where my child had special needs or medical needs? We have the first aid team, it's got a checklist, and the classroom teacher's got her checklist, and it's all submitted, it's timestamped. Any other questions for Scott?
I was just going to say thank you for all your work, and especially for applying for the grant and receiving the grant. And I think that's going to be a huge addition to our school. Thanks for all your hard work.
It's a big collaborative effort over many years.
Thanks, Scott.
Next, we have Mr. Crater, who's going to present the special education program report.
Hopefully you will have in front of you the special ed report that breaks it down into different areas, numbers, the different categories, the things we've done. But I think what I should have given you, Chuck, if you want to hear that, I appreciate it. I found another report that actually made it a little better, and I'll make sure you get that going forward. I'm glad you just don't have those things coming out too early. This one's a little bit easier to understand, I think, so I'll just try to take that around a little quick thing. That one gives you the total of all the special ed students in our school district by category, which I think is very helpful. That will give you, shows you we have seven more this year than we had last. And just to call your attention to a couple of things on that Mr. Verification Sheet. That's one I had to turn in just last month. Our top category is what we call ID students, students with intellectual disability. Hundred and thirteen students in that category last year, hundred and nine so far this year. Our second highest category is other health impaired, which is sort of a broad, I don't want to say catch all, but it catches students that don't fit in to one of the other areas real well, so they go into other health impaired. And the third highest are specific learning disabilities. We have forty-five now, forty-four last year. And then also of interest are the high number of autism students we have. That's up from twenty-one to twenty-four. And then that also matches the speech or the language impairment student numbers as well. It just kind of gives you an overview of where we're at. We do have three hundred and eighty-three students in our district with special needs, identifying special needs, others are in the process of being evaluated. There may be, maybe more, you know, before forty in the month. I mean, it just depends on the timetable for that, but it gives you an idea of kind of how we are. The other sheet, if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer them, but I found this, the second one, to be a little bit better.
Lynn, do you know how that, I mean, that's over ten percent of student population. Do you know how that compares to other districts?
Yeah, that's pretty par for others statewide, that's about the average.
Any other questions for Lynn? Lynn will go ahead and go into the 2015-16 grant update, and we're going to report on Title I, II, III, and VI B grants.
I think the first sheet that you have, I'm not sure the order that you have, but I think it's the one that just shows the amount of money that we're funding through the grants. Is that correct? Okay. Totally, you can go that way. You can see the amount, Title I gets the big chunk, one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-two for this year, or for last year, we were reporting on last year, of course. So the numbers are similar going forward this year. Quite a bit, they're entitled II, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine sixty-one, and sixty-four thousand, eight forty-one, and VI B. So the goals for those programs were to increase the number of students in comarts and math, to raise them up basically from the bottom four to high fours. And, you know, we attach, we attach to, we can attach an arbitrary number, but basically we want to see increase, whatever that is from the year before. So we're looking at that both in grades three and four, and in grades K through two, but that one uses the Taranova scores. So if we look at what we did in this past year in the ELA area, we were able to increase the scores from last year. Thirty-three percent of students were in that upper group, and this past year, we were able to get it to forty-four percent. Under math, we had a smaller increase, but we were able to increase a little bit there from thirty-four to thirty-nine percent. Taranova didn't do quite as well, that went down a little bit more in ELA, but just a small drop in math. The thing about doing Title, I think for us, is we always, we always want to increase, and it gives us a way to have some other tiers and interventions that we wouldn't have if we didn't have it. Because you address the majority of the students in the regular classroom, but you have the opportunity for specific interventions, what is the word, that we were talking about the other day? That's one of the words. Replacement, replacement skills, yeah, whatever word you want to use. It gives the kids a chance to have additional instruction. Sometimes it's individualized, sometimes it's in small group. Our Title folks now are doing it a lot of different ways. We got folks who push into the classrooms, some that pull kids out. We got folks who push in and do a small group. We got folks who pull the kids out and do a small group. So it's kind of changed with the times, and it's adapted to meet the needs of the students. And it's not only the little kids anymore. We pull out whoever might have a need. You might have a kid that's kind of middle of the road that has one area that they struggle in. So the Title teachers are really good about finding out who that is. They communicate a lot with the regular teachers. They can pull that student out, help that student just for a while. So it's not like you're in there all year, forever. You're in there as long as you need to be in there. So it's really neat how they're doing that now. And it's, that's kind of evolved, I think, over the years. And Title folks can say that better than me, but that, that's kind of the way that I see it. I did have a few anecdotal things, and I think kind of paint a picture to this. You know, the reports are kind of, are kind of clinical in a way. That's the same thing, our board reports, they probably all look the same to you because they all have the same format, and you probably think after a while, you're hearing the same old stuff. But what I did find out going to the schools and talking to people is some individual success stories that I think you should hear about. And, you know, we're fortunate to hear how great things are going, you know, in Southeast because of the focus. But, you know, and in a real sense, I think we're focusing at the other schools as well. We don't have that label of being a focused school, but our other elementaries are also targeting instruction and making a lot of difference. And just scribble on a note here about one child in one of our schools. It's a little third grader, a little girl. She started the year, this was, I believe, reading, yes. They were giving her the reading test, and the goal at the beginning of the year was to have a score of eleven. She got a score of eight. Well, a few weeks ago, just before Christmas, she was tested again. And I got to tell you, the passage that she read was about a page and a half long. It was a pretty complicated passage. This time, the goal was to have a score of fourteen, and she scored eighteen, and only had two mistakes. And it was, it was a hard passage, I would say. Most of us would have probably stumbled at least a couple of times in that page and a half. So just to show you in that particular case, someone who had a great success. If I can call your attention just to a couple of other things. We're benchmarking these students quite often, and it doesn't, it's not always reflected in the math scores. Your math scores, you know, you have to wait a year to get those. So what we're trying to do is give progress much quicker than that, or see where kids are needing help much quicker than that. We've got some, a few scores that I'd like to show you. I think these are from our Ames Web program. These work in both math and reading. Let me start here with this. This one just happens to be first grade math. We got, we got students that started the year, we got seven kids. Three of them scored zero on their first baseline test. One scored one, one scored two, one scored four, and one had eleven. So they were benchmarked three times since then. The students that scored zero, one had seven, one had twenty, one improved to thirty-two. A student that had eleven went to thirty-six, one went to fifteen, and one went to twenty, and then one didn't have anything, I don't know if they moved away or what. And if we look at the same sort of score in reading, or the same sort of deal reading, their target back at the beginning of school was to score twenty. I don't read all these sheets because there's about a dozen students here, but none of the students, no, excuse me, one student scored seventeen, and the rest were below that. So nobody was set to target to start with. Well, we retested them recently, here's their scores: twenty, thirty-six, twenty-one, thirty-seven, fifty-two, thirty-five, forty-one, twenty-six, and fifty-two. So, you know, I just want to give our teachers a little pat on the back because some of those numbers are not what you hear about when you hear state scores. And they're not everything, because in the day-to-day grind of doing work and education, these are the scores that are more to be personalized and show the good work that our students are doing and our teachers are doing for them. We had the same scores for all the elementary, grade levels there, that was Matthews. The other story I told you was Lee Hunter. We already know, great child in Southeast is doing, and we also do Title at kindergarten. So if you wanted to go back to my report and ask questions, I'll be happy to do it. But I didn't want to read that word for word because it's kind of standard stuff there. To me, the real face of what's going on is some of these things that are what I call anecdotal or more personalized.
So the Title money on here, Title I money, that is used just for students that have been classified as having any disability?
No, that, that's for any student in one of our Title schools. But there would be the ones that are pulled out, pushed in, or worked in a group, and they could be, they're not all the lowest students anymore, because that's why I was.
Just maybe they need a little extra help?
Right, right.
Something, okay.
It could be a lot of the low students, but it'll also be other students that need it. It's certain any students in that school.
That needs a little extra?
Right.
What, something other than normal classroom?
Right, and the ideal is really to prevent having to go to that special education referral because what we need to do is show we've intervened for typically at least six weeks before we make a referral, because we've tried all these things. Because that's what the special ed people want us to do, is not to overqualify people for special ed unless they truly need it.
So do you use it like for teachers' aid and materials, and just paying teachers' salaries if people like our Title teachers and things like that? Is that what this means?
Yeah, most of it's now because of our, you know, we had that insurance last year, and the cost of salaries and benefits has gone up. I don't think any of it went to anything but salaries and benefits. We used to use it for supplies as well, but we kind of had to, I don't know if we froze is the word, but we encouraged folks not to spend too much because all they needed to go was to pay for the staff.
Thank you.
And you guys who are working in Title can jump in here because you guys know it better than I do. But it's just kind of an overview. So we really haven't changed the goals much. We're still wanting to increase the number of kids that perform well. But, you know, maybe we should rewrite it, not to say what they did on the map in Taranova, but rewrite it to show what they're doing on Ames Web and things like that. That might be one thing we could look at.
Wouldn't hurt to add it to it, didn't you?
At least add it, yeah, yeah. Very good. And then we have a report as well. There's a Title II report. That one has to do with trying to increase community and parental involvement, if I'm not mistaken. Let's take a look at that. The goal was to increase the number of parental opportunities in our schools. We had at least three, three or more, I believe it was written. And we did way more than that. I mean, you get to the point where we lost count, especially last year. The schools were really, really ratcheted up the number of opportunities they have for parenting. Every school was having math night, reading night, school light. We had tailgate, we've had picnics, I don't know, all the names off. But there's something going on in our schools just about every night to give that opportunity there. And the other part of that was to offer a parent involvement study for the faculty, which I was part of. I was able to do that last year with Lee Hunter with a number of faculty there. And I don't know if any of you remember or not, but this past year, when we started school, we had the community bus tour, where you had the buses go around, and full teachers and staff members handing out information about coming back to school, welcome back. That came out of that study. It was an idea that the teachers at Lee Hunter came up with. Well, this fall, we did the study at Matthews Elementary, and had a number of teachers take that study. And you can be seeing what their grand ideal, they have some great ideas, and I know what they are. We just don't know what, how that's all going to work out for the next school year. But it was hard to quantify how many parents come because when you have a school picnic, you don't stand out there with a clipboard and have everybody sign in. It's like, just come, you're welcome, have a good time. So you can't always do the head count. I mean, it's easy to do it like an open house or whatever, but some of those things were a little harder to report on. That's why I did put in a hard and fast number, it's more of a, you just kind of have to know what I'm talking about. If any of you folks were there, you know, that four hundred folks that were at your Southeast picnic was, I wouldn't want to be the ticket taker. I mean, you just had to catch them because they're coming in from all. And the last thing is the ELL report, and it's about our services we provide to our students who are learning English. We have a few more this year. I think we had twelve last year, and we're up to fifteen or so this year. We're getting ready to get the tests right away. The test window is open now through March, and we're going to find out how we did. But our counselors and our teachers work with our ELL students. From things like getting an app on their iPad that'll help them translate, to kind of thinking about how you state a lesson so that that comes across right to someone who perceives language in a different order than we do. English has its own quirks, as you probably know, and some of those things we say is common phrases are like really, really weird to some of our ELL students. Like my wife told me today, my wife just teaches Spanish, so she said- It's like my wife told me today, my wife just teaches Spanish, so she said, you wouldn't, you wouldn't say, uh, what's the old saying about the creeks rising and the sun, what is it? The Lord's willing, the creeks don't rise. She said, that would not make sense to certain Spanish culture. So it's like, we say those kind of things every day because, you know, that's who we are. Anyway, that's the kind of stuff we're talking about. Do you have any questions about that? Did I miss anything, Mr. Wade?
I think you hit it. All right. We go from Boulder County to Madison County, right? Mr. King is going to present the fucking vocational improvement.
He actually has this document here. I'll just kind of hit the high points of it. On the Parkinson's rate, you can see our allocations there for the last several years. I will not give FY seventeen's allocations in May, I'm sorry, in April, first of May. But I always try to estimate that a little bit low because, you know, all of our budgets are due here soon. So as I apply that in there, I'd rather be, I'd rather have extra money come May than have to find somewhere to cut. So right now, I'm going to estimate it by a hundred ninety-five thousand. There's been no indications from DESI that we're going to get any type of cuts. So I kind of expect it to be around that two-hundred-and-eighty range like we received this year. The breakdown's there. Most of it, Mr. Todd asked, majority of our budget is used for salaries of our placement coordinator and our embedded credit instructor. Rest we use for travel, helps offset, you know, the school for when any of our teachers go to meetings, the PD. Also, our Skills USA, this, I was going to say, gets very expensive. And we can use some of that money to pay for hotel rooms for our instructors. That's what we do, we do that for. And then whatever we got left over, I try to buy equipment for. Not all of our classes are enhancement grant eligible, so I try to focus on those classes. And that one, that right there, the twenty-one thousand ninety-five is for digital media for next year for a piece of equipment. Digital media is not enhancement grant eligible this year. Down to the, jump down to the enhancement grant right there. I should have checked this again before I came over here because the enhancement grant's done for FY seventeen. I submitted it. I don't have the exact dollar numbers. I didn't write it down because I'm a big dummy. It's around a hundred sixty thousand dollars though. And now we're only going to pay a percentage of that depending on what the equipment is. It's either fifty-fifty or seventy-five, twenty-five. So we do there at the twenty-five and fifty. A lot of the, around fifty or sixty thousand dollars is technology upgrades. So what they'll do is they'll take, we'll buy it after three years until we work on the fifth year. So we kind of keep replacing stuff that we had over three years so we can just burst that out. You know, it's still good after three years. They just, you know, send it, a lot of those wifi switches, backup and stuff is what, I just ask any, any send it to me, I put it in the record. So FY sixteen's done right now. And we've actually, FY sixteen's done and seventeen. Seventeen sixteen's been submitted. I got the email back from DESI. We should be getting free reimbursement funds, I believe, the twenty and the twenty-first of this month. So we're looking out for that one. Another grant that I write every year is the CDA grant. It's the Improvement Quality of Childcare Education Competitive Grant. It's specifically for preschool. The vast majority of that money is used to pay our eight. We get really close to kind of paying her whole salary there. And then the other is to pay for their certification test because they're four hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece. And it doesn't take long to rack up thousands of dollars when you got, you know, anywhere between ten to twelve kids taking that test. It gets expensive on her. So we use that money to offset that and any type of equipment. You'd be surprised what the CDA requires. They have to build, these, the students have to build a large binder. And they've got to put all kinds of crafts or, I'm not elementary-based here, but you know, cutting. But what you'd seen in elementary, you know, it's a star with Johnny's name on it on the wall. You know, they got to put stuff like that in the binders. There's little machines that do all that kind of thing. So those are the kind of things that we look at. But this is done. Most we ever got this year so far, seventeen thousand five hundred. But I've been lucky, we've been lucky the last couple of years. All the money's been spent. So Ms. West gave from DESI a call and said, hey, I got this much money. Either submit some, submit an F V twos or an F V fours and we'll, we'll either pay it. Or if they didn't fund us a hundred percent, which I always ask for twenty thousand, I say, here, I'm just going to fund it. So every year, we've gotten almost a full twenty thousand because other schools, for whatever reason, didn't spend all their money. I'm okay.
Can you ask for more?
Nope, twenty thousand's the time. Uh, the, I'm always looking for other grants. So every, anytime I come across a handle of this thing, found one, five hundred dollars for a grant. I believe it was from Target. And we're going to apply for it next year when we either, every other year, we go to the Cadaver Lab and then we try to, we go to Cadaver Lab, St. Jude's, Cadaver Lab, and stuff like that. So we'll try to do the St. Jude's, we'll apply for that for next year, St. Jude's trip.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is student enrollment as of January sixth, two thousand sixteen. And as mentioned last week, our enrollment is three thousand three hundred and eighty-three students. That is down fifty-eight students. We did mention that we had approximately eleven students that graduated from New Horizons. We had four that moved out of the country. We had sixteen that moved out of the state and some other areas too, homeschooling, private school, and a few that were dropouts. So as of that January sixth date, we are at thirty-three eighty-three, which is kind of down. We were, last month, we were up, and this month, we dropped down. Hopefully that in the next couple of days, because we have been, we'll get more people that, more parents that are enrolling their kids in school. And we'll build that enrollment backup. Uh, next item is student discipline data. That information again is shared for the Board of Education for the month of December two thousand fifteen. And you'll notice that the list in there is quite short. The ISS and OSS kids from K through twelve is listed in there in three to four short pages. So that month was very good for us. So are there any questions on either one enrollment for this?
Tom, I don't know if I've asked before, but are the alternative school numbers reflected in their respective grades or?
Yes. You'll, what you'll see, look in the bottom, Scott, of that first page there. It says alternative school down at the very bottom, and it says a hundred and nineteen kids.
No, I'm talking about the suspension report.
Yes, it is.
Oh, really?
It's supposed to be. Well, no, I take that back. No, it's not. We can include that. I did have that figure here last week or two weeks ago as far as the total number of kids that were suspended from there. Since it is somewhat of a last resort, there are, there are a few more suspensions that would occur there as opposed to the other school buildings.
Can, can you include that?
I can.
Yeah, if you would like.
Sure can. I can include suspensions as well as the ISS, both. Next on there is board policy consideration, local amendment. Board policy ICE NC, which is speakers of district events. And what we have done with this is placed in there a section dealing with how our graduation speakers are selected for our commencement ceremony. And it just walks through the procedure, and that has been updated, clarified, and we'll send that on to MSBA for clarification purposes as well. But that's for your consideration this month. Okay, moving into requiring action. First bit of business is request permission to schedule exec session, discuss student matters, and also that of personal matters immediately following this meeting.
Is there a motion to do so? Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on it? Roll call. Mr. Leeson?
Yes.
Ms. Dury?
Yes.
Mr. Crump?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of FY sixteen budget adjustment. I have Ms. Borman is going to present that information.
As Mr. Isel referenced earlier in his presentation, the district did receive from the Missouri Center for Educational Safety a ten thousand dollar grant. We did not know about this money at the time we adopted the budget last June. So what I'm requesting this evening, a two-sided adjustment where you would be increasing revenues by ten thousand dollars and expenditures would actually be increased by ten thousand three hundred and five. It takes ten thousand three hundred and five to meet the equipment needs that we need to install the panic button system. That would just be covered in local dollars.
Can I make a motion when you accept the budget adjustment?
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next item is eradication of bills as paid through December two thousand fifteen. Requesting to accept those.
Is there a motion to do so?
Some move.
For a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, there is a charge on here to Bo's Barbecue for seventeen hundred dollars for football awards banquet.
Okay, and where are you?
I'm on page two.
Okay.
Um, my question is, do we do this for every sport?
For seventeen hundred dollars? Not necessarily. It's up to the coaches. It's up to the coaches to go ahead and provide whatever type of ceremony that they have. For example, football will have one, basketball will have some type possibly. Do they have anything? No, not necessarily.
Wrestling has one.
Wrestling may have something. Baseball may have some minor get-together at the end of the year. But it's up to the teams and the coaches to do that. And now, that money there, I'm not even so sure, that money, help me, Lori, was that through?
It would have been budgeted for on there. It's part of the zero-based budgeting. If they plan to have a budget, they put it in their numbers for the specific sport.
I guess my question is, are all of the sports, including girl's sports, allowed to do that? I mean, every sport wanted to have, because my, because for football, for junior high, the parents had to pay for the meal. I mean, that came out of our pocket along with the food that we gave to the boys for out-of-town games.
Just like with band and, and some of the other awards ceremonies that they have.
So any, any sport, and, and the district can pay for that?
I'm not, no, no, no. I'm not so sure that, I'd have to look specifically on the budget. And Lori, you can help me with this, but I don't know if that was budgeted for or not, or if that was simply paid through our office.
That's what I was wondering, if that was paid for by, because we, the parents also fundraise at high school level.
Now, they very easily could have, I don't know, that's, that's one reason.
I would have to get you more information on that. In other words, what could have happened is that money could have ran through our offices.
Yeah, they could have collected the money from parents and then written, the, the check had been written to Bo's Barbecue based on the collections that were deposited.
I, I don't, I don't think that happened with this because I asked some parents, because I was just curious. Because that's what happened at the junior high. We didn't run it through here. It was parents volunteer that we paid them money and they went and got all the stuff and put it on. I, I'm just, I'm fine with having, paying for football, for barbecue for football, but I'd like to see our girls' sports and our, and all of our sports, if we're going to provide, you know, a banquet.
Heather, I would almost guarantee that that money is not budgeted in there. Now, I will check for you.
Yeah, I know, we budgeted for the all-sports banquet because at the end of the year, because it has a separate line.
That's a different.
That's a different, yeah, that's a different thing.
I did not pay as a parent to go to the football banquet. So I know I didn't pay for my ticket, but what I'm wondering is like Sarah, Karen, that collects a bunch of money from parents through the year in donations. I don't know if that goes towards.
Well, I don't really recall how we did it with my, with Luke and Jordan and crew. I don't know.
I'm just saying it may be that they do that.
The food after the game has nothing to do with the school.
Right.
The school does not spend any for the food after the game.
That's donated.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All that is.
And they may have gotten a donation from like Friends of the Program or the Booster, who would help pay for it. Sarah would not help because she pretty much helps run that.
We can check that and let you know.
Thank you.
Be back.
We need a roll call vote, please.
So we need, we had a motion and a second. We had discussions. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll, I will call. Mr. Leeson?
Yes.
Ms. Dury?
Yes.
Mr. Crump?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Lane? Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Okay, next we have a consideration of board policy KL. KL is dealing with public concerns and complaints as proposed by MSBA. With board policy KL, then through that, adding language to that, then rescinded board policy J F H. So Heather, do you have a question on that?
I do. I was looking at, is the process for resolving a concern or complaint? I'm on page four on, I'm going to print it out. I don't know what it would mean for you.
Page four.
Okay. It says the following steps are to be followed by parents, guardians, students, or the public when concerns or complaints arise regarding the operation of the school district that cannot be addressed through other established procedures. Concerns or complaints should first be addressed to the teacher employee directly. Unsettled matters from above or concerns or complaints regarding individual schools should be presented in writing to the principal of the school. So my question is, is that, that's a little bit, I don't know, I can see it being maybe confusing because, or maybe we're asking this. If, if you have a complaint or concern with your child and you go to the teacher and, and you're not satisfied with that, does this mean that you, or, or public or whoever it named here, you have to submit in writing a complaint to the principal before you can, before they will hear that?
I'm looking at this as a little bit different situation. I'm, I'm thinking just the normal communication with a teacher. You don't feel comfortable as a parent, and you're going to go ahead and go directly talk to the administrator, right? That's what you're talking about.
No, no. Because it says on here.
Right, but however. This says this should be addressed, these are complaints that arise regarding the operation of the school district that cannot be addressed through other established procedures. This is sort of secondary procedure, or at least it's the way I read it. So I mean, I would go talk to the teacher, then go talk to the principal. And I would look at it as being an ongoing issue. If you've had something going on, an ongoing problem, complaints, which we have dealt with in the past, then they should go ahead and notify in writing those particular individuals. What's our policy now? Basically the same type of thing. We would follow that as well. For example, if you're going to follow board policy, I've got a blank right now, AC, as far as those things go, you would have to write official notification to that individual saying, I would like to meet with you and have you review this case. So it's kind of, and Brian helped me too here.
I just feel, I mean, I just thought it was a little bit confusing as to, you know, talk to the teacher. And then if you're not, if you're not satisfied, then to talk, to go in and talk to the principal, I'm going to have to submit a written, um, a written, present something in writing to the principal of the school.
There isn't some other procedure.
And then the principal will respond.
And if there isn't another procedure actually in place that you can refer to, then it looks like that's the only way to do it.
Yeah.
Does this come up specifically as it relates to federal programs? No, this is, this is taking policy, the other policy that we're sending, and they're taking that and pouring it into here, is what they're doing as far as dealing with complaints. And it's more along the lines of that there's a complaint, and I can't give you specifics, but we have used it for policy, okay?
Did you take the word concern out and just use it for complaints? Because maybe that's where it's getting confusing. Because if you're, you just have a concern that your kid isn't understanding something or the teacher's not addressing issues of your child, you're going to go talk to the teacher, then you're going to go talk to the principal.
Okay, by, by removing concerns and just leave complaints?
Yeah, but then, then you're into what's the definition of a concern or complaint? Because I may think that I have a concern, but to a principal, I may be complaining about something or vice versa.
I think this is my bits for more serious things, but it's not very clear.
I do too, and I try to, we're kind of making a little bit of a mountain out of a mole on this. If I want to meet with my principal, I've already talked to the teacher, and I want to meet with the principal, I would consider a written, something presented, writing, I simply send an email. I mean, that would be a legal document, something in writing.
What's the intent behind this?
I, I didn't write it, so I don't, I truly don't know. I, it would, it would seem to me, I mean, that's, the way things are done is you talk to the teacher, you talk to the principal, and then you're, you don't, you don't get some kind of satisfaction. It would then be a more formal process where you probably need writing. That's how, we're editing for what's that work. But I, I do see, I guess I kind of go back to what Matt said, and that this is when other issues don't work. It gives, it gives people, they say, I don't know what else to do. I've not gotten what I want. It gives them a more, more formal avenue to then ultimately get to the school. I don't know if I answered anybody's question.
We have another policy now, I mean, that states the procedures to go through. That we're not taking, we're not removing it. Or this is all one.
This is, yeah, they took that parent complaint policy, which is on the other one there, we're rescinding J F H, if I'm not mistaken, and combined that with another policy that's very similar in measure.
There were, I think there were, there were several, there were several policies on complaints. And they, they all vary just a little bit in their procedure.
Which honestly.
So the idea, I think, was at least to get it in our policy. And I don't want to speak for this, but I get it, and write it.
That way.
But it is different.
But that's what I was saying, that it's confusing because it is replacing that policy.
It's, it's not, okay, so I don't have to make a determination whether it's this policy or this policy or this policy. It's kind of condensed in a way. It makes it much more easier.
But that's why, I, I am still concerned there, that, that somebody may have a concern or complaint, and they, and they want to come to the principal of the building, and the principal says, you didn't properly follow our channel, or you're not following procedure, or I didn't have to do that because they didn't put it in writing.
They're not going to do that.
Then send them an email.
I mean.
That's really.
I mean, well.
Just send an email.
If Ms. Libley has a complaint from something, I would assure.
I've never heard of it.
I'm just saying, that's what we can do under our other policy now, as a parent, is, you know, go directly to the next level without.
These are regarding the operation of the school district that cannot be addressed through other established procedures. It seems to me that this is just a secondary.
Well, what are the other established procedures that you're aware of?
If I have a problem with the teacher, I'll go talk to the teacher. And if I don't get a resolution, I'll go, I'll call the principal or go talk to him.
But where's that at in policy? That's just, that would just be a.
It's a procedure. It's a procedure.
But your procedure goes off of your policy. So if you have a policy that states that.
Is there a policy that says we can't email them just to ask them a question, or, or just go talk to them? Wait, wait.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this policy, to me, reads that if you have a problem, you go to the teacher. And then if you're not satisfied, then you have to email the principal.
If it cannot be addressed through other established procedures.
We may need to look at what other procedures are out there. Because I, I was kind of whispering to Tom, or maybe not whispering. I, I thought there was an informal addressing of.
I thought there was too.
I think there is, and I don't have all the procedures.
It would be worth looking at.
It would be worth looking at.
Okay, but if you go up to the next one, this is about filing an official complaint. Okay, which to me, in, in our experience that we have had over the last couple of years, is different than this, the normal day-to-day conversation or disagreement that you may be having with your teacher. And I think that, I thinking that's kind of where you're going, or you're not. You're, you're trying to differentiate between the official complaint and just the normal discussions with your teacher or administrator.
Well, I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, I think that's right. But I think if it said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but it does, up in the next section, does it not?
Above that section?
It just scrolled down.
That's why I was asking this, it's, because it, it refers to federal programs, blah, 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 notices, and then the process for resolving the concern or complaint. That's why I said, is that's what it's regarding to. But complaints regarding district compliance, non-discrimination of the process, according to policy A C.
And then it also says, "MSBA has merged language from policy J F H into this policy so that there is one process for students, parents, guardians, and community members to bring concerns and complaints to the district."
Now, I personally think that's probably a good idea to combine, but I wouldn't want to leave
Kind of open.
ambiguity. So if, if there's established informal processes, they all refer to.
Just kind of add that in, yeah.
It said, so there is a KL, that's a K A P administrative person, because that's what you're talking about. That would be the person.
Mr. Williams, I don't know if this will help or not, but our handbook already has the standard complaint resolution procedure. And it says you go to the teacher, one. Number two, and you go to the principal. And three, you go to the superintendent. I wonder if that has anything to do with what you're saying or, or not. But that's on page eight, four of the district portion of our handbook.
I thought that we had a standard complaint scheme there.
Yes, it references.
But maybe that's what you're saying, KL, H, or J F H was.
Yes. Those two merged together. As far as student complaints compared to that of, it just basically public concerns and complaints. This used to be, if I'm not mistaken, that of parent complaints. And we have student complaints. And student complaints is what we then have rescinded.
We need to clarify this before we, I think we need to find out what we have out there.
What's that in the handbook? Is that, that's a procedure?
Yes.
If that's a regular procedure.
Baseball board policy.
And is that the handbook for students that they take on?
That's in the district fact, yeah.
So are we not going to want to have that in there? Is my question. Sounds like we're trying to consolidate everything in this, which would not make that apply.
Well, it's a procedure in the policy.
We could say pursuant to handbook, other established procedures.
What would you like to see in this policy then to clarify it? I guess is what I'm asking.
If it's only in the handbook that it refers to being able to verbally go through the process to get to the board ultimately if you need to, then I guess that we should refer in our policy to the handbook procedures that's available.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But now, in, in the policy, in the policy, or excuse me, in the handbook, you said it said, go to your, or something.
Step one.
Teacher.
Teacher, administrator, and superintendent. It doesn't say anything in there about filing in writing.
It's a procedure. Redness is policy KL.
Could we at the, in the first paragraph, it's not numbered, under process for resolving a concern or complaint, add, where it says cannot be addressed through other established procedures or informal communication with teachers or administration? I mean, I think that does, that might address the concern.
Why are you getting these things?
Yeah, okay. It talks in here. This is talking about standard complaint resolution. We're talking about that of anything dealing with a state or a federal law that has been violated. That is the process that you go through in dealing with that. Okay?
This.
Mm-hmm. That's what this is talking about in the student handbook as well. And it addresses that as far as board policy KL.
So if that's what, that's what I asked the first thing. If this relates to that, and we want to be real formal as it relates to federal programs and non-discrimination and stuff, that's probably right.
Then you go up to the next talk, yeah, you go up to the next two parts, and it talks about that as far as general concerns and complaints, and then go on down about federal programs.
But it says that we're replacing our policy J F H. And it's saying, it, it has language in here where, um, if the complaint has to do with a federal program, then it goes on to tell you what you need to do with that. It's not just about federal programs. Because it even.
No, it's not.
It, it specifies out, if you have a complaint about a federal program, then this is what you need to do.
I, I think what Brian said, if it's, if it's more the all-encompassing complaint filing policy, then we do need to reference our procedures for, for informal process. Just because someday way down the road, somebody's going to say, well, you didn't ever write that down to me, so I didn't take it serious, you know? I mean, and then we'll be sitting here feeling.
Okay, so where are we?
Revert, take what you said. Well, I'll, I'll try. Uh, add, add that the language of that first paragraph, cannot be addressed through other established procedures or informal communications with teachers and administration.
Did you all hear that?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it came to this.
Yep.
Okay.
You could, if you wanted to go ahead, if, if, if that's acceptable, you can make a motion to approve it with that additional language.
Sure.
That's great. Let me, let me make sure I, I make sure I wrote that down correctly, so.
So it'd be then with local amendment.
I make a motion to accept this policy with the local amendment. That Brian will now read to us. See if I can remember every step. I can't say it as well.
With the local amendment, it would read, uh, the following steps, where we follow that parents/ guardians, students, or the public when concerns or complaints arise regarding the operation of the school district that cannot be addressed through other established procedures. The added language would be, or informal communications with teachers and administration.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not sure if there is. All right.
Yep, sent in aye.
Uh, we have the approval of minutes, work session, December second, two thousand fifteen, exec session, December second, two thousand fifteen, regular session, December eighth, two thousand fifteen, exec session, December eighth, two thousand fifteen, exec session, December twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, regular session amended November tenth, two thousand fifteen. Ratification, substitute teacher report, acceptance of employee retirement, Tina Enix, acceptance of employee resignation, Sarah Ward, sale of surplus school property pursuant to board policy D N dash A P, welding equipment, and then approval of board policy as proposed by MSBA, D L C, D L C A, and then rescinded J F H. Is there a motion to approve? For a second. All right. Any discussion?
I have, um, I thought with Ms. Ward that it was going to be contingent on finding a replacement.
She's not, she's not resigned until the end of school year.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Somebody.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.